I call to order the August 24th Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Getzelman, could you please do honor Venus and pledge allegiance?
Thank you Chair Mendoza. Appreciate that. Everybody stand please. If you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Secretary, please take roll call.
Yes, thank you Mr. Chair. Commissioner Creo.
Here.
Commissioner Kofel.
Here.
Commissioner Daniels.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Montalve.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
And Chair Mendoza.
Here.
You have a quorum with everyone present.
Thank you. Can you let, please let the public know how they could participate on today's meeting?
Yes. So only staff and committee members should have videos on during the meeting. This helps to reduce distractions and helps with the bandwidth during the meeting. We will be monitoring and turning off videos as needed. You can turn on your video when you're presenting using the Zoom function. We we do have the ability to participate by oh, um, let me back up. I missed one thing. We also ask that you keep yourself muted during the meeting to reduce distractions again. To mute and unmute yourself, use the mute button that looks like a microphone. And on the Zoom platform and using your landline, you press star six. We ask that when you're ready to speak, you use the raise hand icon. In the Zoom platform, that's opening the reactions tab and using the the little icon that looks like a hand button. If you're on the phone, you press star nine to raise and lower your hand. We also have the ability to accept emails during the meeting. We'll be checking that in real time. The email address is PChearingcomments@co.monterey.ca.us. That's all one word, PChearingcomments@co.monterey.ca.us. We'll be checking that email inbox. If you'd like to send an email about an agenda item or things not on the agenda as well. We also, Mr. Chair, if I might have a new consent calendar. This is something that's fairly new, that's new to the Planning Commission. We haven't had that on the agenda in the past, so I thought I'd just mention that that's, many of you may know how the consent calendar works, but any planning, usually you would, you can adopt all of the items on the consent calendar in one motion. But before you do that, you typically would ask if any members of the commission would like to pull something from from that consent calendar. And then ask if any members of the public would like to pull things from the consent calendar. If things are pulled from the consent calendar, you would, you would then entertain a motion if there are still items on the consent calendar to pass the rest of it. And then you would take up the items that were pulled from the consent calendar, much like it would be a scheduled matter. You can have a discussion about them and act on them individually. And I'd be happy to help as we go through that if that's needed. And that was my introduction for today. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, I probably will need help with that. I've never gone through that. It will be something completely new for me. This is a time set aside for public comments on items that are not on today's agenda. If anybody has a comment, now is the time. And Madam Kirk, if we can check, see if there's an email on public comments.
We have no new emails.
Thank you. And I do not see any hands either, so I think we'll move on. This is time set for planning commissioners, for the commissioners to see if you have any requests or referrals for items that are not on today's agenda. Commissioner Deal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, it's not technically within our purview, but I would like to just recognize that I've been a longtime critic of the Car Week events and the traffic that they bring to the community. And I want to recognize that the efforts of all concerned seem to have made a big difference this year in my experience. And while there's always improvements to be made, I just want to recognize progress and congratulate those involved for having made a difference for those of us who are trying to go on with ordinary life during a time when others are enjoying the car events. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Daniel.
Thank you. I thought I might bring this up later, but I hadn't thought of it as an opportunity for Commissioner comments, but as a commissioner, I would love for us to be able to get an update on the the work that the Salinas Valley Basin GSA is doing. I think that would be of interest, especially in light of where there are, where there's further information about the overdrafted conditions of the various sub-basins. You know, I realize perhaps this might not pertain to an item that's on the agenda specifically that we have coming up, but I do feel like it would be of value for us to have more detail about the, the, the man, the, the plans that were drafted by the GSA so we can understand better the various circumstances in each sub-basin and, and as that, and how that might relate or impact a project that we are making a decision about. So if that is possible, some kind of presentation for the planning commissioners as it would relate to decisions we're making here at the Planning Commission, I think would be very helpful.
We can add that to our list for referral items and that would dovetail with the Toro area specifically as one of the basins that has already been requested.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chairman Dosa, you're muted.
Thank you. No wonder I couldn't hear myself. I, I was saying, would any commissioner like to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate votes? Commissioner Deal.
I, I don't know if I would like that or not, Mr. Chair, because I would, I really am excited about this new addition of the consent calendar. And on the other hand, I do want to have the opportunity to recognize the service of those who are resigning from the LUACs. And I just asked for the advice about how best to add the request for letters of acknowledgement for the service of all those who have presented their resignations here. Some of them have been on these bodies for a very long time.
Yeah, I, I think that it would be appropriate to pull the that, those items from the consent calendar. There and, and we'll bring it back for discussion and, and then act on those separately.
Perfect. Commissioner Dell.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to pull it. I, I should have done this as Commissioner comments. I, I would like to find out what the state of the pandemic state of emergency is and just get some feedback at some, maybe next time from staff as to where we think we are as a planning commission. It, I don't want to lose the opportunity at this point of, of the public to be able to weigh in via Zoom. That's been so beneficial. But I'm just curious where we're at in terms of our, what it looks like for us in the future in terms of remaining online, having these meetings or as, as, you know, ridiculously convenient it is to join the Zoom, which I love. What is, what does the future look like for this planning commission? Is there any thoughts about going back in person or hybrid?
I, I will add Commissioner Daniels. I also sit with Monterey County LAFCO and they had the same discussion when they were considering their AB 361 findings. And the commission on Monday decided they wanted to go back to a hybrid manner of holding meetings because some commissioners want to go in person. So that's what they're going to do going forward. So they've continued to make the AB 361 findings because all those circumstances, the state of emergency is still in, in effect and the health officers still recommending social distancing, but certain commissioners want to be in person. So they've made that request for the next meeting. So it's really up to you all, if you want to have that discussion now under the AB 361 item or agendize it for next our next meeting. It's, it's really up to the commission how you want to proceed.
Well, through the chair, in light of that, I definitely think we want to keep this on the consent account, calendar and, and make the AB 361 findings because that would allow for the hybrid meeting as well. So I won't pull it, but if there's other commissioners who have an interest in having that conversation either today or in the future, I'm happy to participate and, and just see where we're at. But for now, I'd like to keep this on the consent calendar because either way we go, if it's hybrid or fully remote, we need to make these findings is my understanding.
Yeah, that's accurate.
Thank you, Miss Dawn. And now we'll move on to our scheduled matters.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We, we pulled the item three on the consent calendar for
Mr. Spencer, I don't know that you need to pull item three. I think the direction was given from Commissioner Deal and if the commission wants to vote on all three consent items at once, that, that works with the understanding that you'll send letters per Commissioner Deal's request.
If that's the only comment on that item, then that would work, but we also need to ask if any member of the public would like to pull the consent calendar or pull any items from the consent calendar, and then we need to vote on those items.
Okay. So we'll open it up to the public. If the public would like to point the items. If they could please raise their hand. I don't see anybody. Madam Kirk, do we have any emails? Is, I guess we all have to, they get the emails, is that correct? Yeah. So we'll do that.
We do not have any emails. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I guess we will need a motion, correct?
Be happy to make a motion, Commissioner Daniels, to approve the consent calendar.
I think, I think that the the, was the, is the motion to approve items one, two, and three, or just one and two?
One, two, and three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Commissioner Deal.
Thanks, Commissioner Deal. So we have a motion by Commissioner Daniel and a second by Commissioner Deal. Mr. Spencer, can you please take a vote?
Commissioner Creo.
Yes.
Commissioner Kofel.
Yes.
Commissioner Daniels.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Montalve. Commissioner Montalve. You're on mute. Come back to her. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Work.
Yes.
Chair Mendoza.
Yeah.
Commissioner Montalve.
Yes.
There we go. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. So now we would move on to item number four. Is that correct?
Correct.
Through the chair.
Oh, yeah.
I believe we skipped over the agenda additions, deletions, and corrections.
Okay. I apologize for today's.
I can go ahead and read those into the record now.
Oh, yes, please.
We received correspondence from the public for agenda item number four, PLN 210191 Davis and agenda item number five, PLN 210167. And that's for Farini Ranch and those were distributed via email yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diana. And now we'll move on to item number four. Staff, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chair Mendoza and planning commissioners. My name is Fiona Jensen. I'm the project planner for Davis Kelly Trust application. HCD planning file number PLN 210191. The project is located at 1458 Riada Road Pebble Beach and is within the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan. The parcel is zoned low density residential, 1.5 acres per unit with a design control overlay within the coastal zone. The applicant proposes construction of a 3,646 square foot, one-story, single-family dwelling and attached 476 square foot attached garage and construction of a 344 square foot guest house over a 398 square foot storage area. Associated site improvements include a new driveway, 62 square feet of development on slopes in excess of 30% and removal of 10 non-native trees. The proposed project includes trellis roof overhangs that extend from the exterior of the residence and an arbor connecting the proposed main residence to the proposed guest house. The property is currently developed with a 3,099 square foot, single-family dwelling. Demolition of this existing residence, as shown on the left of the screen, was approved under PLN 210002, resolution number 21-026, but has not been demolished as of date. Although staff finds the proposed project to be appropriately cited to minimize removal of native trees, avoid slopes, and the colors and materials are consistent with the neighborhood character, staff is recommending denial of the project due to an exceedance of lot coverage. The property is zoned low-density residential, which allows a maximum lot coverage of 15%. The property is 0.7 acres in size, which would allow a maximum lot coverage of approximately 4,617 square feet. As proposed, the project will result in a lot coverage of 5,962 square feet or 19.36%. This is a 4.36% over, percent over the allowed maximum. The lot coverage calculation includes the proposed main dwelling, the attached garage, attached guest house over storage area, eaves extending 30, greater than 30 inches, and the trellis roof overhangs and an arbor. Staff would like to note an error in the last sentence of finding one evidence E of the draft resolution. The proposed lot coverage exceeds the maximum allowed by 4.36%, not 1.68%. Trellises proposed for this project extend from the eaves of the buildings and overlay decks and patio areas proposed at the rear of the house. These trellises are included in the lot coverage calculation since they extend 30 inches from the wall, meeting the coverage definition. The arbor between the main dwelling and the proposed storage and guest house structure is relied upon as a structural connection for the purposes of applying a main height or main dwelling structural height and setbacks. Arbor's, trellises, and other similar accessory structures have been historically considered structural attachments. Without the structural attachment, the storage and guest house structure would exceed the allowable accessory structure height limit and would not meet the required accessory structure front setback from Alvarado Road. Staff does not find it appropriate to allow an arbor to represent a structural connection for heightened setback purposes, but not for other site development standards like setback or lot coverage. In summary, staff finds that trellises, arbors, and other similar accessory structures meet the definition of a structure and therefore the entire footprint of the structure, in this case, the arbor and trellises, should count towards lot coverage. The applicant does not agree that trellises and arbors constitute site coverage. The applicant indicates that since the proposed trellises and arbors have open framework, they should be differentiated from typical roofs or eaves. Further, the applicant was opposed, opposed to removing the trellises and reducing the eaves over 30 inches as those features are integral to the structural architecture design and have energy benefits. Therefore, the applicant has been unwilling to remove the proposed trellises or arbor to reduce the overall development size to meet the allowable lot coverage. On August 4th, 2022, the Del Monte Forest Land Use Advisory Committee voted seven to zero to support the project with the change that the county of Monterey and the applicant come to an agreement or conclusion regarding site coverage and trellises. The LUAC agreed that although the design of the proposed residence was appropriate for the surrounding area, the LUAC could not support the design as proposed due to the exceedance of allowable site coverage. Thus, the LUAC recommended support with one change. Staff received a public comment letter from the applicant's representative on August 19th, 2022. This letter raises issues regarding processing timeline, coverage limitations, and the need for an administrative interpretation. Staff received the initial submittal of application materials in August 2021. Since then, staff has deemed this project incomplete twice as a result of the applicant's representatives not submitting the requested information listed on the checklist. Contrary to the letter, staff did not request that the eaves extending greater than 30 inches be changed to trellises. The only design that changed that staff requested was relabeling the detached structure from guest bedrooms to guest house because guest bedrooms would not be supported in this case. The letter states that the purpose of coverage limitation in the Del Monte Forest is to control drainage and runoff into the Carmel Bay area of special biological significance. This is a reference to policy 777 of the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan, which details impervious coverage limitations for development within the Pescadero watershed. In this case, trellises and the arbor are permeable and therefore do not count towards Pescadero watershed impervious coverage limitations. The issue at hand is building site coverage, not compliance with policy 77 of the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan. Building site coverage is a requirement of the Monterey County zoning ordinance and is, is a specific percentage of the lot size and is intended to control the bulk and mass. In this case, trellises meet the definition of a structure and contribute to the overall bulk and mass of the dwelling. Regarding the comment about improper processing of an administrative interpretate, interpretation, staff is happy to prepare and agendaize an administrative interpretation regarding lot coverage and accessory structures such as trellises, arbors, etc. But the applicant's representatives requested scheduling the item before you as soon as possible, and therefore an interpretation has yet to be prepared. In conclusion, staff recommends the planning commission find that disapproval of the project is statutorily exempt from the secret guidelines pursuant to section 15270. Deny a coastal administrative permit and design approval to allow construction of a 3,646 square foot, single-family dwelling, 476 square foot attached garage and associated site improvements. Deny a coastal administrative permit and design approval to allow construction of a 344 square foot guest house over 398 square foot storage attached by an arbor to the main dwelling and deny a coastal administrative permit to allow less than 120 square feet of development on slope exceeding 30%. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Getzelman.
Thank you, Chair Mendoza. So Ms. Jensen, I got a question for you. The area underneath the trellises that are in dispute, is that, is that area already counted as coverage? I mean, is there something under there that's already being calculated into the coverage?
Numbers. Through the chair, under, something. Underneath the trellises, it truly depends on what it is. There are some permeable stone pavers that would not count towards lot coverage or Pescadero coverage, but a typical concrete patio would not count towards site coverage because it's not considered a structure. It's a hardscape.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you. I also kind of have a clarifying question. You mentioned that because of these trellises, the the, the adjoining structures are being allowed some sort of benefit essentially from these trellises. Can you explain that or describe that a little bit more?
Sure. There's a definition in the Monterey County zoning ordinance for structural attachment and it allows for main dwelling setbacks and height to be applied to an accessory structure if those two structures are attached structurally. And staff has historically used trellises, arbors, and other similar architectural designs to meet that, that requirement. So in this case, the allowed height for the main dwelling, I believe, is 27, whereas the guest house is 15. That then allows the guest house to exceed that 15 height limit and allow the higher of 18, which it's proposed at. And then also for setbacks, the main dwelling is required a 30 front, 30-foot front setback, whereas the guest house as an accessory structure would be required to meet a 50-foot front setback. By being structurally attached, it is allowed to meet the 30-foot structural or 30-foot setback, sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that we're walking through the low-density residential zoning district in Title 20. There are setbacks applicable to a main structure, setbacks applicable to accessory habitable structures and setbacks applicable to accessory non-habitable structures. And the front setbacks, side setbacks, and rear setbacks, depending on the type of structure, have different setbacks. There's an exception in our zoning code that allows for any deep, any structure, whether it's habitable or non-habitable accessory structure, if it's attached structurally to the main residence, it shares the same setback requirements and height as the main structure. So then it, it's subject to the main structure height and setback requirements. In this case, there's a, a storage and guest house that's attached by an arbor trellis to the main structure. And that's relied on for the height and setback, front setback from Alvarado Road. Without that structural attachment, the guest house and storage building doesn't meet the front setback. And it would be over height for an accessory habitable or non-habitable structure. But with, with the structural attachment and application of the main structure height and setbacks, it does meet those, those setback criteria.
Okay. I, I guess just to follow up on that for either of you, are, is this, is this interpretation of this trellis different than we've done in the past for other residences?
So the, I'm not aware of this discussion having been formal in the past. We have as, as the planning department or HCD allowed a trellis to be considered a structural connection to the main residence. The, the question of whether or not the trellis should be included in lot coverage calculations hasn't been formally written that I'm aware of, and I'm not aware of any formal debate around that particular issue.
I, I guess, do, are you, well, I maybe, maybe it hasn't come up, but I guess I'm wondering if we have accepted a trellis as site coverage or if it has, maybe we haven't got, have, have we calculated the trellis as site coverage in previous projects?
Potentially. I, I, I think it was all, all part of the review of any individual permit, and I'm not sure it's come up as it, as an issue. permit, and I'm not sure it's come up as an issue until more recently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm following up on Commissioner Robertson's remarks and questions. I have a quite strong memory in the past, although I can't cite the projects on a couple of cases of having made similar arguments, I for want of a better word, certainly similar difficulties with the fact that we have in the past considered trellises to be structural connections and not lot coverage for the purposes of either the Pescadero watershed or anything else. And so I am remembering having actually had those conversations myself in meetings about projects. So whether or not that's formal, it certainly is in my mind that we had those conversations and that my point of view did not prevail. And that we then approved the projects with both of those things having, an assumption, been worked into them. And so in this case, I become concerned that we would be doing something different with this project than other people have experienced with similar projects in the past, and I will just color that by saying that that was in contravention of what I originally thought we should do, but I don't want to be unfair. I think that's really important. And whether or not there's been a formal director's interpretation would be colored by when the formal director's interpretation process was agreed upon. And that hasn't been in effect for a terribly long time. In the past, the director was able to make interpretations and send out a letter, and it didn't go through a formal planning commission or board of supervisors review process necessarily. So I would be very concerned that staff supplied or had conducted a pretty comprehensive search of whether or not these interpretations have been made in the past because my memory is different from what I'm hearing from staff right now, and admittedly, it's not a great memory, but you always kind of have a picture in your mind of the ones you lost, and I believe I lost this one on a couple of occasions already. Thank you.
It may be that your memory goes back a little further than mine.
Nice way of saying I'm old.
It might have.
I'd just like to add to the conversation a little bit that I think Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Deal both raised very important points about interpretations and that those need to be formalized before particular actions are granted. And so should the planning commission wish to consider an alternative than what's being presented here today? What needs to be in first position then is consideration of that policy interpretation and/or a code amendment. You know, perhaps there's consideration of a code amendment that would allow formally accessory structures to exceed the lot coverage. For example, up to fifteen or five percent beyond what is required for principal structures or other types of structures that may be on the lot. So that would be my suggestion, if the planning commission wishes to take a different position than what staff has formally recommended, that it consider those two things, either a policy interpretation or a code amendment. Because what's being requested from the applicant is that the planning commission consider essentially a variance without the necessary variance findings, and that would be another option. We haven't vetted that to know that the findings could be made here. But it's staff's impression that that now as proposed would warrant a variance because they're in exceedance of of the lot coverage and those other issue, design-related issues that goes along with that.
Thank you. I think Mr. Lundquist is wise to suggest the formal process in any case of addressing this issue. However, my concern here is that we have a past practice in which I believe we have done, we have done something. And we have done, the thing that we have done has been, to my memory, pretty much universally considered trellises to be connections but not coverage. So an interpretation that is a change to current practice can't be implemented without a process. But an interpretation that is contrary to current practice can't. And that would be a big difference for these particular applicants. So it'd be important to me to know whether my memory is correct and whether or not we have in fact done this in the past before we say to this applicant that we need to hold them up for the process of a code interpretation or change that is going to take an inordinate amount of time because everything we do does because we're the government.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Dale?
Thank you, Chairman Dosa. The conversation is, has actually provided information that I didn't grasp from reading the staff report, so I want just some clarification. Even if it were determined in this case that trellises are connections but not coverage, are you saying, staff, that the fact that it is a connection brings them, the applicant, a benefit in terms of setback and height of the accessory structure? But we also, at the same time, don't want to count the trellises or the arbor for site coverage. So we want the benefit of them being an actual connector, but we want to not have them be a connector in order to get we don't want them to be a connector for site coverage purposes, but we want them to be a connector in terms of setback and height purposes. Is that what's being asked of us?
That's what the applicant's request is.
Yeah, and I think, I think if I think the intent of the heightened setback exception with the structural connection is essentially the appearance of a single building having the same height and setback when it's structurally attached. It becomes part of one building. And and so the that adds to the bulk and mass, which I think is where we were basing our determination that it does have some implications on structural height setback and other site development standards, which, and it meets the definition of structure and structural attachment or connection. So at counting it for one thing and not the other seemed against the purposes of the code, which was part of where our recommendations was based.
Okay, well, through the chair, Commissioner Deal has a lot more history than perhaps anyone on this commission, so she would know what's been done in the past. And I too am concerned about fairness in the sense of what does this mean in the future? And in the future, if we make this decision today, a policy, you know, the policy needs to be addressed or the code needs to be amended because it doesn't, it's not fair to future applicants if this is the actual definition of an arbor or a trellis, but we make an exception in this case, but then we hold the future applicants to that definition that's in the zoning code. So I feel like this is a conundrum, but an opportunity to perhaps for the applicant when they give their presentation to really give us some insight in terms of what it actually looks like in terms of perception. And if we, because if it is a policy that's in place for bulk and mass purposes, you know, I would just like some more insight into whether that arbor appears to be a structure or not. If that helps, I don't know if that's going to help, but it would be helpful.
Yeah, through the chair, I would add to the planning commission's consideration. You know, you're looking at a particular example here in the Del Monte Forest, but also consider, you know, what this might look like in Spreckles or what it might look like in San Lucas on smaller lots where, you know, trellises, are we allowing them to cover the entire site? You know, are they not having to adhere to setbacks? You know, what are the implications of these decisions and direction that's being made by the planning commission? I think you need to carefully consider what that action might result in.
But to Commissioner Deal's point, legally, if this is going to be a change from what's done in the past, it needs to be a policy consideration separate from this application. And Mr. Lombardo contacted me yesterday, and I do believe the applicant has some examples of how this has been interpreted in the past. So after the commissioners make their comments, maybe it would be helpful to have the applicant present, and then the commission can go from there, from their determination.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal?
My comments have been addressed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from the applicant or applicant's representative.
Chair members of the commission, Anthony Lombardo, am I audible? Thank you.
Not very audible through the chair.
Mr. Lombardo, yeah, we can't really hear you well.
Let me see if I can do something about volume. This process never ceases to. Yeah, that's full.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Through the chair, perhaps, if the commissioners can just weigh in, I believe if I turn my volume up really high, I'll be able to hear Mr. Lombardo. But I don't know if the other commissioners have that experience, that opportunity.
Exactly. I think we kind of have to.
Now, I have my volume up fairly all the way, and it sounds like I can hear Mr. Lombardo.
I just want to make sure, Commissioner Dale, that everybody else can hear him.
Of course. No, I understand that completely.
He, I can hear him, it just sounds a little distant.
That might be my mental attitude, not my speaker. All right, I apologize for hollering, but hopefully everybody can hear me.
It is better, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anthony Lombardo, on behalf of the applicant, the commissioner's comments have been very insightful, and I want to point out the basic procedural problem with what the staff is suggesting, which is that you cannot change the interpretation of the zoning ordinance without going through a formal process. And the staff, and I will show you a slide in a moment, has said that they intend to make a new interpretation of the zoning ordinance prohibiting or requiring that a trellis be considered coverage. That is not and has not been either the interpretation of the zoning ordinance or is that language contained in the zoning ordinance itself. In fact, the opposite is the case. So county council and Commissioner Deal comments are correct that in order to make this new interpretation, you have to go through a process that requires public hearings at the planning commission and possibly the board of supervisors. The reason which, for those of you who were on the commission a couple of five years ago, resulted from an administrative interpretation involving the Sima Kalima Winery. And that new policy was adopted by the board and has not been changed and is required before the staff is allowed to change the interpretation or change the change the way the zoning ordinance has been administered. As staff mentioned, as Fiona mentioned earlier, the staff is considering agendizing an administrative interpretation in the future. And that's what has to happen. The operative concept is that it is the future, not this applicant. So, Mr. Ellis, if we could go to our first slide. This is located in Pebble Beach to the left where it says Alvarado Lane, Riada Road. That's the existing site, as you can see. It is in a neighborhood of very large two-story, principally two-story estate homes in a very exclusive part of Pebble Beach. Next slide, please. Bulk and mass. The staff mentioned bulk and mass. Clearly, lot coverage is the concept, one of the ways that we control bulk and mass along with things like floor area ratio. However, in this case, there is no way that anyone could rationally conclude that this house design or the trellises attached to this house in any way have any issue with bulk and mass. On the left hand, you see the existing home, one-story home with the netting. On the right-hand side, you see the proposed one-story home, and you see the orange line. That is the height under the zoning ordinance to which a home could be built. So in terms of bulk and mass, this proposed home design is a single-story home. The entrance is ten feet below the elevation of Riada, and the trellises that we're referring to are invisible from the public view because they are on the backside of the house. So the trellises themselves have no effect whatsoever on the perception of bulk or mass of this house, which has been designed by the applicant and their architects to be incredibly invisible in a neighborhood of incredibly visible houses. Next slide, please. So this is the back of the house, the rear yard of the house. The trellises, which are somewhat difficult to see, but they extend around the home. The question regarding the guest house and the trellis connection, which the arrows were indicating, for, you know, forty years I've been doing this, people connect guest houses to main houses for various reasons. Principally, one that occurs very often, and I've got examples of at least two of them, is because there's some feature about the topography of the site that does not lend itself to a separate detached guest house. And in this case, the topography of this lot in the foreground drops off away from the single-story main house. So the structure on the right-hand side of the illustration is the guest house. And that is, that's on a sloping portion of the lot. So the way the height of a structure is measured, even though, as you can see, it's a single-story guest facility, because the bottom of the house slopes down, it would be considered over height. So there is no additional height being added to the structure. It's a way that the structure conforms with the zoning ordinance, and as you can see, is consistent with a very de minimis design for the structure with the trellises and the overhangs, which have no effect on the public's perception of bulk or mass. Next slide, please. This is from the inside of the house. You can see the little trellis extending over the eaves. In the background, you see the guest house, and you can see a little snippet of the understory of the guest house below where the topography drops off to the right. That's the reason for the trellis connection. Next slide, please. Here's the, this is, I guess, from an equity standpoint or a fairness standpoint. This is the process that this applicant has been through, and it's indicative of why the board of supervisors said you can't adopt a new zoning interpretations without going through a formal process. So applicants are made aware of what the rules are before they spend money designing homes and making applications. The pre-application occurred last June sixth. On October seventh of two thousand and twenty-one, the applicant submitted the current design, for all intents and purposes, of the trellis and the arbor because they were informed back then that the extended roof eaves, as described in the zoning ordinance, I'll show you in a minute, were not permitted because they were counted as coverage. So on October seventh, the applicant resubmitted the design with these trellises. October, November, December, January, February, March, April, no issue with the trellises or with the arbor. In fact, on April twenty-second, they received an email from the staff saying that they had no problems with the design. June ninth, the applicant was informed that the application was complete and would obtain an administrative approval on July sixth. That's important because an administrative approval can only be had if the project complies with all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, in other words, the staff, the staff felt that the project complied with So in other words, the staff, the staff felt that the project complied with the current zoning ordinance as of July 9. Then, without warning, on July 15th, they were informed that the staff hasn't made, was making a new interpretation, and that therefore, if you go to Ms. Jensen's email, you'll see it says, "Staff will be preparing an administrative interpretation regarding trellises." That, that is an accurate statement by Ms. Jensen as to the appropriate process for a new interpretation of the zoning ordinance. But that has to be done before it's applied to an application, not a week before the project is to be approved. Next slide, please. That, as I mentioned earlier, is a result of something that happened in 2017, and you can see the memorandum to all of the Board, the Board of Supervisors states that this process shall be followed for all administrative interpretations, and this process would be not, the new interpretation would not be effective until the conclusion of an appeal or the, or the hearing process on adopting that. So it is, it is illegal to attempt to apply that new interpretation to this application based on the direction of the Board of Supervisors. Next slide, please. I'm not certain if there's a misunderstanding of what the applicant's argument is or a mischaracterization of it, but we are not arguing that the trellis is not a structure or that the, that what we're proposing here is not a structure. That's not the question. They are structures. But they are structures which do not count against coverage, because as you can see, this is the code definition of coverage, and Commissioner Deal is correct that this has come before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors and the zoning administrator year after year. I don't know how many of these I've handled for the exact same reason, to connect an accessory structure structurally to the main structure, not for coverage, because the definition states that, where I've highlighted it, coverage means a structure, but then it says not including, in other words, structures that are not considered in coverage are eaves on buildings less than 30 inches, and then it says, and similar nonusable areas. And so this applicant included eaves over 30 inches, was informed that those would be counted as coverage. They redesigned the house plan to eliminate the extended eaves and include trellises, like dozens of other applicants have. And after that, the staff raised no issue regarding coverage until two weeks before the project was to be approved, at which time they were told that the staff was going to make a new interpretation of the zoning ordinance, which would be inconsistent with this. In addition, from a common sense standpoint, coverage means to place something over to protect or conceal. These open trellises are not, quote, usable areas for any type of coverage or condition space, and nor have they ever been defined as that by the county. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier by the staff, the main coverage issue in the Del Monte Forest is not having to do with, or the coverage issue in the Del Monte Forest is not bulk and mass. I've, I personally have been involved in my share of McMansionizing Pebble Beach with some homes with 13 bathrooms and, you know, 20,000 square feet. Bulk and mass are not an issue in the Del Monte Forest. What is an issue in the Del Monte Forest is runoff. In fact, there's a specific policy specifically describing what the coverage issue is in the Del Monte Forest, and that's Policy 77, staff referred to earlier, which limits site coverage to 9,000 square feet. And as staff mentioned earlier, this home is consistent with that. We're approximately 10% under the allowed site coverage, meaning that we have met that coverage, the specific coverage policy for Pebble Beach. And in addition, runoff nowadays doesn't just leave the site and go to the street and go to the storm drain. It has to be retained on-site. In fact, we use pervious pavers frequently, which are clearly coverage of the lot, but are not considered coverage because they don't do anything to trap or accelerate runoff of water. Next slide, please. Next. I, I, I looked through files and found a couple of examples just between yesterday and today of examples of projects where the county has, the projects have included arbers or trellises to make connections and, and as, but were not counted as site coverage. This is a project called Abalone Cove. And as you can see, in the lower part, the lower part of the picture, there are trellises outlined in red, and there is a trellis that connects an accessory structure to the main structure for the purposes that I described previously. These are all approved and built or under construction projects where these trellises or arbers were not considered as coverage. Next slide. 1658 Cressby Lane in Pebble Beach. Again, a number of trellises and arbers that were not considered in the coverage calculation. Next slide. This is a Touche Pass home, which is Pasadena. Again, trellises used to connect accessory buildings to the main building, which were not counted as coverage in the approved plans. So in summary, I agree with Mr. Lundquist. If the county Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors believes that we should count trellises or arbers as coverage, there's a process, the county certainly has the ability to do that. There is a process to do that, and that process does not include telling an applicant two weeks before their project's to be approved that there's going to be a new interpretation. These people have done at least five revisions to their plans at the direction and advice of the county staff up till the point where they were told that their plan was not approvable two weeks before it was to be approved. So we would respectfully request that the commission follow the requirements provided by the Board of Supervisors and not apply this new interpretation to this application. Go through the process that was established by the Board of Supervisors for as a consideration of a new interpretation. Approve this project as being consistent with the existing interpretation, the existing regulations under the county zoning ordinance, because it, because it has neither any impact on the bulk or the mass of this structure as perceived by anyone. It has no effect whatsoever on the runoff into the Carmel Area Bay, by area of biological significance, and it is consistent with both Commissioner Deal's memory and how this county has treated these types of applications, and I just showed you three examples of them in the past. So we would respectfully request that you proceed and adopt a statement of, a resolution of intention and ask the staff to come back in two weeks with finding for approval. And then if they desire to have a discussion about trellises and arbers, I would suggest that you should involve not lawyers so much probably as architects and engineers in a discussion about, you know, what the benefits and drawbacks of, of the way the county has interpreted this zoning ordinance since it was adopted in 1992. Also, the architect, project architect would like to give a brief, brief present, or make a brief statement, since she was the one who was involved in, in the process here since the beginning or near the beginning. And then we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Laura Jensen, and I'm the project architect for this home. Our design intent was to be a good neighbor, to design a low-profile and low-impact home. We never sought to design something that required a variance or to bend the rules. We worked interactively with staff from the time we applied, responding to all of their comments. The trellises in question were in direct response to the planning department advising us that we were over the building coverage limit last fall. So in October 2021, we changed the roof overhangs over 30 inches and a covered patio to be open trellis, allowing water to pass through them. We did not interpret coverage to include an open permeable trellis. The definition of coverage uses two examples in its context, decks and building eaves, both of which are solid. After resubmitting the plans with the new trellis overhangs, we received no further comments on coverage. Subsequent comments from the county were in regard to the trellis attachment to the, to the guest house, and we received positive feedback from staff confirming there were no issues with the design. We proceeded with drawings for the project, understanding that we were within our coverage limits. While the open trellises allow water to pass through, they filter light coming into the house like a tree. The trellises are located primarily on the south side of the house for this purpose. They provide filtered shade throughout the day, portions of the house where we have tall glass, reducing solar gain and glare on the interior. The house will be a net zero energy home. The design is a single-story, and the main level is set 10 feet below Riada Road to maintain a low-building profile. With a subtle raised berm at the street corner and lush landscaping, the house will be almost entirely screened from view. The trellis heights range from 0 feet to 4 feet above Riada Road. The overall scale of the house is minimal in, in the context of the surrounding neighbors. We could have easily designed a two-story home within the coverage limits that would have appeared much more massive. As I said before, our intent and the others' intent is to have a friendly, sustainable design, not adversely affecting any neighbors' views and sensitive to the regulations of the area. Thank you for your time.
So that, that's our presentation, unless the commission has any questions. Just to, in closing, the Pebble Beach Company Architecture Review Board had approved the project. The Del Monte Forest Land Use Advisory Committee had no issues whatsoever with the project other than the, the issue raised by staff about the trellises, and there have been no neighbor opposition whatsoever to this very sensitive design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Commissioner Roberts?
I have a question for Mr. Lombardo, if possible. It just, I'm just curious to know if, in the examples that he provided, whether or not if the trellises had been considered as site coverage, if that would have put those particular lots over their maximum allowable.
Yeah. The answer is, in some cases, yes, in some cases, no, because, for example, in the preserve, you know, you've got a 20-acre parcel. So it's unlikely that it would. In the Del Monte Forest, it's likely that it would have. And in all of the cases, they were never calculated, considered, the trellises were never considered in the calculation of coverage, because you have to, whatever the number you have is, you have to put in the, in the application. And so coverage, the coverage figures were never inclusive of trellises in any of those three applications, or again, in any that I can remember. I just found these three. It sounds, then that sounds consistent with what Super Commissioner Deal's recollection was as well. But in some cases, it would be over. In some cases, it wouldn't have been over, but in no case were they calculated as part of the coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dell?
Thank you. My questions are going to be more for staff in response to Mr. Lombardo's presentation and, and the presentation of the architect. And the house feels very appropriate in terms of bulk and mass for the site. And being able to see it, we, for me, it makes a lot more sense, having seen the presentation. But my concern is going to be where we, as a commission, and we, as a county, address the issues that are before us today in the future. And so one of the things that I would really like some feedback is Mr. Lombardo addressed administrative interpretations and cited the Sima Kalima project. And my recollection of that was not quite the same in terms of what the decision that was made in 2017 about administrative interpretations actually was. And so I do really want staff to weigh in at the, into the fact of whether or not this is in fact a new interpretation, because I don't, I don't believe that's the case. And that actually, sorry, my computer's making noises at me. So if, if, if we can get some feedback on, on what was presented to us, that would be great. And then I believe it's time to get to public comment.
Yes. I, I think there's, there's several things being conflated here. I know that the county has in the past debated the, the definition of structural attachment as being, or structural connection, which is in Title 20, it's a definition. It, it, it is in some ways debatable whether or not a trellis should be considered a structural connection. That issue has been, you know, commonly practiced. We do allow, and probably based on some to a policy direction that was discussed at some point, we do allow trellises to be considered structural connections for the purposes of getting the heightened setback exceptions. To my knowledge, I'm not aware of the discussion then leading to whether or not it should be considered lot coverage. We have examples both ways. I think probably in cases where the trellises are part of the design or structural attachments, it may not have been an issue of lot coverage. It may not, it may have been a lot that was large enough, and they were nowhere near the lot coverage. And yes, they had trellises, and yes, they used them for structural attachments. And yes, we allowed them to apply that heightened setback exception for attached structures. But I'm, it, it's unclear what the interpretation of the existing code has been, and I don't think there's been a consistent practice on whether or not that trellis then becomes subject to lot coverage. It's also a different definition of lot coverage than is found in Policy 77 of the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan. Policy 77 has to do with pass-through water. It's impervious surfaces and not, which includes driveways and patios and hardscapes that are specifically not included in the definition of coverage in Title 20. Those things are specifically exempted from the definition of coverage. What is included in the definition of coverage are eaves and overhangs over 30 inches or more, which sounds like it may have been discussed early on in this project, and revisions were made to, instead of having the eaves extend, to make them trellises, which then begs the question, are the trellises part of coverage? And so the, the definition of coverage in our reading and the application of it in, in the context of bulk and mass and the use of it for site development purposes were all factors in our, in our application of the coverage requirement to this project. And we certainly are willing to go through an interpretation and formalize this. But we were asked to move this forward in order to get some resolution on this permit without having to go through that interpretation process and then are caught in a catch-22 where we shouldn't be applying an interpretation on this project if it, if it's a global interpretation. So we're here with a recommendation on this project based on the interpretation of the existing code that has, that, to my knowledge, has not been consistently practiced one way or the other, or formally vetted.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Carrillo?
Thank you, Chairman Duda. I just, I wanted to, don't necessarily need a response regarding that, but I know Mr. Lombardo put, during his presentation- But I know Mr. Lombardo put, during his presentation, did a timeline regarding, you know, the whole process and talked about that. He did receive approval and it wasn't until two weeks prior to coming before the commission that this issue was raised. Whether that's true or not, I just, you know, was wondering why that happened as it relates to the process. Thank you.
In response to the chair to that, there is a review process that we go through from the various staff levels. And thankfully, staff was doing his job and captured the fact that those trellises in the arbor that are proposed would exceed the lot coverage. So it's, it's our review process and sometimes those things are captured early on and sometimes due to changes in evolution and plans that ends up being in the eleventh hour. It's, it is a bummer when that happens and unfortunately, and happened in this particular case.
Thank you. I think now we'll open up for public comments. The public has any questions now is the time? Yeah, but. Mr. Stoker?
Hello, I'm David Stoker with Stoker and Alair. I don't know how much of the public I am. I will be the builder on this project if it ever gets approved. I, along with Tony and Commissioner Deal, have been doing this a very long time. I have been working with the county for over thirty-eight years. And I can tell you the comments. I appreciate Craig's comments that this policy has been approved. I think he said sporadically, and I can tell you until about two years ago, I have never seen this count on trellises. Tony showed you an image of Casaladera, where specifically, this is, this is in Pesca Dara watershed. It is in Pebble Beach, but specifically not because of Pesca Dara watershed, because of FAR and building coverage. The roofs were taken off a part of the building and replaced with trellises where they were not counted. We have seen this a number of times over the years. So again, I think the interpretation is a new interpretation. I respect the staff's ability to go, oh, we think it's been done wrong for many, many, many years. And then bring it to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Supervisors for, to see if they agree with the interpretation. But I think it's an important discussion point. But again, this is not new. We personally have been through many, many projects where trellises were not counted. And the point of this was not looked at until two weeks before the hearing after it already been approved to go to the Administrative Board, which does not look at anything except items that are going to be approved. So shocking, just shocking that it came up. Another thing I just want to clarify is the comment was made that the Lua turned this down because of the trellises. I was at that hearing. The Lua turned that down only because they felt that they could not vote for it if that was what the interpretation, which is why they put in the specific language. They wanted this to be resolved by the Planning Commission so that there would be something clear that they could vote on, but they did like the project. But again, I have never seen it. I've been doing this a very long time, that the county is counted trellises. I can bring up specific ones, but that that Casaladera was in Pebble Beach and it's specifically related to coverage and FAR. Thank you.
You're muted, Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Adam, quick, do we have any emails on this?
We have no new emails for this item.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the commission. Jeff, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a little tricky for me because as I related, I think that the staff's current interpretation is a good one. I think what they are proposing as the administrative interpretation, to be clear, makes more sense to me than what we've done in the past by a lot. And I think I've said that on numerous occasions, and I think I've experienced that on numerous occasions. So from my point of view, what I would like to see going forward is that we would follow our normal documented practice to this point with this project and not consider the trellises to be coverage for the purposes of calculating lot coverage. We would consider them to be structural connections for the purposes that Mr. Spencer outlined. And that we would be able then to move forward with what appears to me otherwise to be a fine project. At the same time, and it would be dependent upon, I would like to refer to staff that the administrative interpretation be prepared and agendized and brought back to hearing to represent staff's guidance and recommendation and interpretation of both the inland and coastal zones with respect to trellises and how they are to be counted in the future. I think that's the cleanest way to go forward and that would, I believe, as a motion, should after everybody else has had a chance to weigh in, be along the lines of like to move an intent to approve this project and bring it back at the next scheduled Planning Commission hearing for the appropriate resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Gettleman?
Thank you, Chairman Doza. I totally agree with Commissioner Deal, which I usually do, but I would also like to add that I question why staff kind of jerked the rug out under these people. I don't quite understand why this interpretation came up under these circumstances. I can certainly see how these circumstances, the circumstances surrounding this project would trigger questions and trigger an administrative review of the policy. I just don't understand how it was included at the last minute to kind of jerk this client around. So that part bothers me a little. I certainly agree with Commissioner Deal on both points. We need to have a discussion on this subject so that we can go forward with a clear understanding of how we're going to treat these these trella structures. My personal opinion, being out here in a hot part of Monterey County, is that trella structures are, it's sometimes almost essential to building a house because shade is extremely important, at least down here in southern Monterey County. So I would be happy to second Commissioner Deal's motion and and move forward, certainly with the with the here, or with our consideration of the administrative definition of this, of the trellis proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gettleman. Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. My, I guess, question for staff and maybe even the makers of the motion is in this particular case, if this had come to us with a variance for five percent variance and showing, you know, that the trellis was included, I mean, it would, this would have been, to me, an easy exception to make. And so I'm wondering if in this intent to approve, if that's the way it's written, just to show that we've considered all of this information. Or if that then sets a precedent that we haven't, you know, applied to other projects and therefore, you know, it's complicated. So I guess that's my question.
It's, it's a good question, Commissioner Roberts. I, I'm not sure that the, the variance would be an easy finding to make. We'd have to identify special circumstances applicable to this property and not setting a precedent. I think until we do, you know, based on today's direction, until we get a interpretation formalized, we would have not be counting trellises towards lot coverage and allowing them as connections for structural connection purposes. Once the interpretation's finalized, we'll use whatever the interpretation says. And and so we'll work on getting that created. For what it means to this project is we would not be including it in the calculation for coverage. But if the interpretation ends up being that trellises do count towards lot coverage for the purposes of of calculating coverage in the zoning district, it could make this particular building legal not conforming.
Okay, thank you. I I would just like to interject as far as the motion on the floor. I I would like to work with staff on whether this needs to be an administrative interpretation or maybe we just need an amendment to the code, which I do appreciate requires more work. But if this is unclear, then I I would at least like to consider making changes to the zoning code so that this is very clear in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Don. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Donlin's point is a good one, but what I would propose is that the administrative interpretation should then recommend study for necessary code changes as something would come subsequently. It could be in effect until such time as we determined whether or not we needed to change the code to reflect it. But I I would like to have the opportunity to have settled a process before the time necessary to change the code. It just takes so darn long. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, I agree with some of the discussion that has been brought about commissioners. And I do believe also that if it's going to be a change in interpretation, a policy needs to be brought back and either to the commission and then eventually to the Board of Supervisors. And so I think that in, in, as Commissioner Deal had mentioned, that she remembers some of this information where the interpretation has not been consistent. And Mr. Lombardo brought back some information in terms of what the definition of code coverage is and examples of where trellises or arbors have not been counted as coverage. I think we need to to look at those and I, and I think I'd approve the project, especially if there was no issue with the Land Use Advisory Committee or that no neighbor concerns were theirs. I know that this is debatable and it seems like in the past, some of this particular projects that have been approved and not, and trellis has not counted as coverage. So I think that that we do take every project into very careful consideration as far as it affects different parts of the county. And I think we take each project individually and and take all those considers, considerations very, very carefully. And so anyways, I, whether it's brought back again, I think I'm going to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. So we do have a motion on the table. We have a motion by Commissioner Deal and second by Commissioner Gettleman. Should we take a vote on it?
Yes, happy to do roll call. Commissioner Correa?
Yes.
Commissioner Kofelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Daniels?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Gettleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montalve?
He had to step away for a minute.
Okay, absent. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
And Chairman Doza?
Yes.
Motion passes with one absent.
I don't know. Does anybody want to take like a ten-minute break before we go on to the next item?
Yes, please.
Chairman Doza?
Yes, please.
Before we break, if I may, ask staff if we will, I didn't expect the first item to go as long as it did. And I have an eleven AM lunch I'm supposed to be at. Do we have a quorum if I leave before the second project completes? I'll be leaving at ten forty-five if we have, if we have a quorum.
Yes, we will have a quorum.
Thank you.
No one else leaves?
There you go. Yes, I think we would be fine.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that and I'm very sorry about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Dale. So let's take ten minutes. We are back. Welcome back, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can you please take roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Correa?
I'm here.
Commissioner Kofelt?
Here.
Commissioner Daniels? May have left the meeting?
I will be leaving. My apologies. I'm here, but we're getting close. Thank you.
Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Gettleman?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Montalve? Absent. Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
And Chairman Doza?
Here.
We have nine and soon to be eight.
Excellent.
This is a quorum.
Thank you. And now we move on to item number five. Staff, whenever you're ready, you may proceed.
Okay, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Good morning, members of the Planning Commission and Chair on Kenny Taylor, Project Planner for PLN two one zero one six seven for any ranch project. The project is a map extension of a previously approved subdivision of eight hundred and seventy acres, located south of Highway sixty-eight between River Road and San Benascho Road within the Torrel area. The project site is divided into two areas. First, between River Road and Toro Park Road, the eastern portion. And second, between Toro Park and San Benascho Road, the western portion. The project is an extension of a previously approved vesting tenant of map from PLN zero four zero seven five eight. On December sixteen, two thousand fourteen, the Board of Supervisors approved a combined development permit consisting of a vesting tentative map. A lawsuit was filed to the Board of Supervisors and was granted a stay for the expiration of the map. An eighteen-month automatic extension would extend the date for the map till March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. A written request was submitted to staff by the agent granting, requesting a six-year extension. As such, if the Planning Commission approves the extension, the new expiration date would be March seventeenth, twenty twenty-nine. As discussed at the Planning Commission hearing on July thirteen, twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission requested that staff would clarify the criteria applicable to review the extension and provide additional information on the water resource. Granting an extension on a vesting tentative map is an discretionary act under Government Code Section six six four five two point six E. The Planning Commission cannot impose additional conditions other than those related to the length of time of the map that is valid. In accordance to Subdivision Map Act, Section six six four nine eight point one, allows the local agency to condition or deny an extension to a vesting tentative map if the following findings are made. The proposed project will place residents or the subdivision or the surrounding community or both in a condition dangerous to their health or safety. Or the proposed vesting tentative map does not comply with state Or the proposed vesting tentative map does not comply with state or federal law. In this case, staff has determined neither finding can be made in support of conditioning or denying the extension requested. The project has a map extension to a previously approved vesting tentative map. There are no changes or modifications proposed. To the project. All impacts have been addressed under the previously approved certified environmental document. Staff recognize factors that cause delays. For the project that includes a number of conditions and complexity with the conditions of approval. Fell negotiations for the sale of the property between two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty two. And factors related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Staff recommends the planning commission consider the length of time necessary to comply with map conditions. As previously stated during the July thirteen. Twenty twenty two planning commission hearing. Planning Commission. Had concerns in regards to the water supply for the project. This review is not part of the extension. However, staff will address it. As approved in two thousand fourteen, the project would be served by cow water. That includes wells near Spreckles that are located in the one eighty by four hundred awkward. Sub-basin of the Salinas Valley groundwater basin. Cow Waters. Urban Water Management Plan indicates that cow water has the capacity to serve the project. The project is located in zone two C. The benefit of the zone is defined for the Salinas Valley Water Project. And new reservoir operations. These regional improvements were developed. To better manage groundwater resources within the Salinas Valley Groundwater Basin. And two thousand twenty pursuant to the State Groundwater Management Act Sigma. The Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency adopted a groundwater sustainability plan. The GSA does not have authority over land use planning regulations. However, the GSA will coordinate. With the county on general plans and land use and planning and zoning. Implementing the GSP. Sigma requires the formation of the groundwater sustainability agencies to manage a local groundwater basin. The GSAs are local agencies responsible for development and implementation. Of the groundwater sustainability plans. If the GSP refers to overdraft conditions that were recognized at the time of the decision on the project. And provides detailed information regarding groundwater projects that are planned or in place. That are designed to slow. Seawater intrusion and reduce or replenish pumping of the basin to achieve sustainability. Within the basin, addressing the overdraft problem. Actions in the GSP are focused on the basin wide infrastructure and programs that do not address. Individual land use projects. Although the project will cause a slight increased demand. In the Salinas Valley Groundwater Basin. However, there's no indication that the project would conflict or hinder the ability. To implement the GSP. In conclusion, planning staff recommends the planning commission certify the previously adopted environmental impact report. And consider new, no new environmental review is required. And approve the extension for six years until March seventeenth, twenty twenty nine. For a combined development permit, including a vesting tentative map for the Fernier Ranch subdivision. That concludes my project and presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tater. Excellent presentation. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Taylor. My question is about the term of the extension. In your staff report, I read some extracts from the subdivision code talking about. Extensions and the authority to provide them. And in both cases, they say things like the commission may grant an extension not to cumulately. Cumulatively exceed three years for standard subdivisions. And three years is mentioned elsewhere, I believe, as well. What is the basis for the six year recommendation given that?
Yes, so. And improving past extensions has been limited to a three year term. However, the government code section recognizes that projects for extensions. The max extension is a six year term for the project.
Yeah, I think I clarify. Our subdivision ordinance has a a three year provision in it, which was based on an older. Now superseded portion of state law. So it used to be that maps could be extended for up to three years. That's our our subdivision ordinance was adopted at a time when that was the case. And the state law in the subdivision map act has been amended to allow up to six years. And there's a provision in our subdivision ordinance that is intended to. Allow for changes in the subdivision map act to be incorporated in the subdivision ordinance as they occur without having to amend. That our subdivision ordinance every time. So we have an outdated three year reference. That new state. Criteria are not so new is six years. And so using the provisions in our subdivision ordinance that allow us to apply the state law in the subdivision map act. The total of time allowed to be extended would be six years.
And just for the record, the subdivision map act section that we're discussing is six six four. Five two point six subsection E is where it's six years is referenced. And this is just a small point I noticed in the slide on the water supply. Slide CSIP was written in conjunction with zone two C, and it shouldn't be this. Area has nothing to do with CSIP. That's a completely different benefit zone assessment area. And the zone that this is in is zone two C, which is a special assessment collected on the Salinas Valley Water Project. So I thought I'd just make that clear for the record.
Thank you. To follow up on that, I remember because my staff report made no mention of six years being allowable under our statute. That I can find. And what would be the reason for that? I mean, we're talking about a project that was approved originally. In two thousand fourteen, admittedly went through a whole lot of other iterations. So we're not talking about litigation was being resolved in, I believe, the end of two thousand nineteen. So we're already talking about a project that has, as they do here, taken an inordinate amount of time. The code section quoted here in the staff report justifying six years, and I don't really see. What the criteria would be for whether or not we would adjust that term. We would have the ability or the discretion. To adjust that term to something less than six years. I mean, I was looking for the language to say, is it six years? Is it automatic? You have make these findings is it's up to six years? If you make a choice, what is the choice based upon? So those are the kind of pieces that I don't quite understand. And so if somebody could help me do that, I'd appreciate it.
I can add in that the the period of time for the litigation stay and then the changes to the subdivision map act. When it was eighteen months and the other extensions don't apply to the six years, the six years is a standalone, so those don't. Feed into the six year period, and it's in the planning commission's discretion. If you would like a shorter amount of time than six years, there's no set criteria. It it's within your discretion whether or not to deny, approve, or. Limit the amount of time within the six year maximum time period, which is permitted by the subdivision map act.
May I follow up, Mr. Chair? Yes, that's great. Are there findings that wouldn't be necessary to make in any of those cases? If we said no extension, a shorter extension or the extension they're asking for, are there are there specific findings required in any of those cases?
No, there's not specific findings. The staff recommendation and the resolution before you today does contain. Findings supporting the approval, but if you'd like to do something different, we'd need to discuss that and. Through this hearing, discuss the appropriate findings for to support that decision. But there's no specific siding findings outlined in the law.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioner questions? I still see your hand, Commissioner. Do you have any additional questions?
One has just come to mind. It was because I forgot to lower it, but then I have to take advantage of that. My my additional question is just remind me the original period for which the map was deemed to be. Applicable was three years. That's how much comes with the original approval. Is that correct or am I misremembering?
It's two years. Two years and then shortly after that litigation was filed so that two year time clock didn't start ticking. Until two thousand nineteen, when the litigation was resolved.
Thank you. My my question was related to in the original intent. When we, when the project was approved, that was a period of two years that came with it. With notwithstanding all of the other things that have occurred, so. If I were just saying approve it today in that approval would have been a two year, a two year. Period to allow people to comply with all those conditions. That's the original number.
Yeah, unless unless we added a specific. Finding or condition that allowed more time than two years. It's it's two years based on the subdivision ordinance and and state law.
And it was in this case. Is that correct? Now my hand is down, Mr. Chair. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. And now we'll go to the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Good morning again.
Lombardo, we can hear you.
Yeah, I I went from big technology to little. I'm on my iPad.
Good job at work.
Solved my technological problem. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission, Anthony Lombardo again. Pretty straightforward. I provided a a letter and attempted to answer some of the questions about. Issues that were raised in the prior hearing. The staff mentioned after the project was approved, litigation was initiated against the project in the county. That lasted till two thousand nineteen. Of course, the COVID lockdown occurred. It's starting in February twenty. And you know, now nobody even knows if they can afford to buy a house, I guess, based on what interest rates and the economy is doing, so. There have been some interest in the property by some conservation organizations, and we want to give time for those discussions to. Fully be realized, so we requested the maximum amount allowed under. Law, and I think Commissioner Deal asked, I think, a question about a finding. And relate related to the the time of the extension or the approval of the extension. Not so much, but as related to the denial of the extension, government code, there is a government code section that. Mr. Taylor has on pay at the bottom of page two of his staff report. That requires some specific findings for denial of the extension involving. Immediate health and safety dangers or inconsistencies with the the planning documents, so. There's been no suggestion that that's the case, but I just for clarity's sake. To deny the extension, there is there are some specific findings required, so. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can about. The project or the process or any of the issues I my letters. Describes what the courts found, and that's pretty well describes it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Do any of the officials have any questions for the applicant's representative? Don't see anybody. I'm gonna open up to the public. Do you have a comment on this item? Give a second here. Don't see any hands. Adam Kirk, is there any emails on this project?
There are no emails for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring you back to the commission. Dad, is there anything else you'd like to add? Mr. Deal?
If staff has nothing to add, seeing Mr. Spencer shake his head there. Okay, I am inclined to make a motion to support an extension of three years, which is slightly more than the original amount of time given. To comply with these these conditions when the subdivision was approved. Absent all of the other things that have happened. And one of the reasons that I was proposed three years. That I'm more comfortable with three than six years is that I do not believe that we. Should be providing a whole lot of of support. For concerns related to the market. I don't think that's our job. And I think that the conditions that were applied are the conditions that were applied. They, at that time, that was. Two years was deemed an appropriate amount of time for moving forward with those. And six years is a very long time in a very rapidly changing land use environment. So my proposal and motion would be to support. Support an extension of this application for a period of three years. For those reasons and removing the references to market and outside forces in our resolution. Because I feel that those really are more the concern of the project proponent than they are of the county.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Deal and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Mr. Spencer, can you please take a vote?
Yes, Commissioner Creo? Commissioner Kofelt? Commissioner Daniels? Commissioner Deal? Commissioner Getzelman? Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Montalve? Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Work? Chairman Doza? Motion passes. Eight yes, one absent, one abstention.
Thanks, everybody. Sorry I monopolized your whole agenda today.
Thank you. And now we move on to other matters.
That would be me.
That would be you.
So we added today. Referral to come back on. Groundwater sustainability agencies and what they're doing and how that might impact what we do. So I don't have any other updates on the referrals at this point. I do know that. Yesterday, the board had some discussions and Eric may have to help me with this. Regarding events. And cannabis taxes. Eric, could you help?
Sure, be happy to. On the special events, I presented an item to the the board supervisors regarding. Our existing special event program. And then ask ask the question if there should be an update to that program. Either changing the way that we're processing special event authorizations. Or enhance in the board directed enhancements rather than a comprehensive. Rather than a comprehensive overhaul to the existing special event program. The board also directed. Coming back to the board with the establishment of a processing fee. We currently don't charge a fee for the processing of special event authorizations. And looking at a fee that would be applicable to the. For profit events versus the nonprofit events. There is also suggestion to look at and just for the benefit of the planning commission. Our special event program, we don't issue a special event permit per se, but we issue individual permits. So if a tent's required. Tent permit will be issued. If an encroachment permit is required typically for signage, encroachment permit is issued. If a temporary food facility permit is required, then a food facility permit is issued. All those permits are issued concurrently. Which is then the authorization to conduct a special event upon all of the appropriate inspections. So. Supervisor Adams would like to see more of an umbrella permit. So we're going to be looking at. The appropriateness of that, knowing that also state agencies are involved, California Highway Patrol. Is involved in that process. And they also considered whether it was appropriate to adopt an unruly gatherings ordinance. We're going to take a little bit of pause before we do that and on the heels of the recent updates to the noise control ordinance. Report back to the board in six months on the the violations that we are. Receiving and to give them more context onto whether unruly gatherings ordinance would be required in light of. Noise control ordinances and then some of our other ordinances that we have currently on the books. For example, littering prohibition, we have a social host ordinance that looks at underage drinking. So you know, we have already have these layers of regulations and as I indicated, the board, the problem right now is implementation. So we need to really strategize and work with our partner agencies on the implementation side. So we'll be doing that over the next six months and. Reporting back to the board. So we'll keep the planning commission apprised of any changes to our special event program. But we find it's currently working effectively and efficiently and we just on the heels of Car Week last week. We didn't have any issues to speak of that I'm aware of. So all was operating. Pretty well with the coordination and collaboration that we have with all of the outside agencies. Special forces and our emergency personnel. Office of Emergency Services. We've got it pretty well dialed in now. And it just as Commissioner Deal mentioned with the onset of the. Meeting that, you know, it seems seems like we've got it under control and are addressing the. Visitor population versus our resident needs. That's good to hear from Commissioner Deal's perspective. And it sounds like she might have a question. So before I go on to the cannabis. Chair would allow.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes, thank you. And I I just really appreciate Mr. Lundquist filling us in on that. And would say that of the complaints that I have been part privy to regarding Car Week for his own information. The two of this year had to do with the noise and impact of road racing. Or, you know, erratic driving. We had insufficient law enforcement coverage in our area down here and in some portions of Carmel and Koshawa. To prevent some of the erratic driving that accompanies people who have high-performance vehicles. And the other thing that has been an increasing problem and I heard from a number of people about was airplanes and helicopters. Because we've had a number of cases where people were subject to repeated. Close contact from either low-flying helicopters or airplanes. And had no sense of where or how to address that concern. And this is to the point of people having. Were livestock at risk from these kinds of things as well as just being not concerned. So. I truly appreciate the many improvements and just want to make sure that we continue to provide the feedback necessary to address the the remaining outliers. That are still out there for us to improve even further. So thanks again.
And thank you for that information. On the cannabis, I was in the audience at the board. Kelly was sitting as county council yesterday on the diet. So. She may have some more insights on the cannabis-related item. But there was direction to reduce the cannabis tax for indoor from seven to three. And then mixed light from three to two. And then there were some discussions on the delinquency. And those payments. So Kelly, might you provide a little more clarity on the waiver?
Yeah, previously the supervisors approved a waiver of penalties and interest for the past. The last fiscal year, third and fourth quarters, and what they did was extend that waiver and penalty period. And the idea is now cannabis operators will need to pay their taxes by. January of. Two thousand twenty-three. And there there still might be discussion on the if that's extended, but for now, that's what the board. They introduced the ordinance and waived reading yesterday and then it'll be considered for adoption on September thirteenth. So it was the two items, lowering the tax rates and then extending the waivers, the waiver penalties and interest on delinquent. Commercial taxes.
And on a separate note, hearing the request to have the Salinas Valley groundwater. GSA presentation at an upcoming meeting, I'd like to request a member from that agency, I believe her name is Emily. Forgetting the last name, but perhaps we can invite Gardner.
Yeah.
Yeah, perhaps we can invite her. So I'll be reaching out to her to see if she can attend our next planning commission meeting and give a presentation. On the GSPs.
And the final item at the board was they did approve the rescission of the of a. Of a conservation easement that came before the planning commission for an amendment in Pebble Beach. One other item, we are going to be sending out doodle polls to the planning commission. For another special planning commission meeting in the evening. We're trying to set that up for some projects that are going to need to come back on that evening based on. The type of project and location and the reason and the fact that we had night meetings on it in the past. And there are actually two of them that will be coming. We'll deal with one of them at a time. So please respond to that doodle poll so we can find times that work for the majority of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I know that people will appreciate the opportunity to participate. My my comment was just to Mr. Spencer to remind probably unnecessarily that the most recent request. For an administrative determination with respect to the status and use of traluses should go on our list so that we don't lose track of it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Do we have any options for Spencer?
It just maybe perhaps worth mentioning that the ad hoc committee dealing with the big Sir Land Use Plan Update. Is continuing to meet and make progress. For the benefit of the rest of the commission and those who are on it know full well. But I thought I'd just let you all know that those are continuing and we're on above or close to fortieth meeting at this point. So. We continue to plug through that.
Craig, in that that statement reminded me. To inform the planning commission about the release of the notice of preparation. For the preparation of an environmental impact report related to the draft vacation rental ordinances, both coastal. And inland. And that first scoping meeting, which we're calling a public consultation. Will be held on September sixth of this year, so next month. And that will provide an opportunity for the public to provide us indication on its desires for the scope of the EIR. We will be following up with a subsequent second scoping meeting that will be really geared towards agencies. So they provide that opportunity for the same discussion on the scope of the environmental impact. That NOP and the initial study will be being circulated, I believe, by next week.
Thank you, Mr. Lundquist. If we have nothing else, I call this meeting adjourned at eleven eleven. Thank you, everybody, for participating today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.